President.
Counselor Garcia?
Here.
Counselor Dante?
Here.
Counselor Lucero?
Here.
Counselor Padilla?
Here.
Please join in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principle which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Second.
Counselor Dante?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Citizens to address, Carolyn Newton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here because I got the newspaper this week and I was quite upset. You know, it brings us back to a couple of weeks ago when the city posted about instilling fear in our community. Now the City of Grants is putting that we need to temporarily give up our constitutional rights. I don't understand this. Once we give up our rights, we're never going to get them back. So, I just don't understand why the city would post something like this to the citizens. Again, we're dividing everybody. We've got to find a way to come together. We can't instill fear and try and give up rights. We've got to find a way to come together as a team and make this work. I see so much hatred in our town still. People are pitting against each other. There was a post on the Main Street page. Getting local citizens to turn against local business owners if they weren't requiring masks, if they were opening when they weren't supposed to. So, I don't understand. We've got to work together. We've got to find a way for the city council, our mayor, our city manager, and the citizens of this town to come together as a team. You know, I'm here because my business is here. I see this affecting everybody, but we can't keep tearing each other apart. How are we going to fix this? I mean, it's just getting out of hand. Any ideas? I mean, because...
Well, I for one stand with the Constitution. I am about to give up my constitutional rights for anybody, for any reason whatsoever. They're not suspendable as the manager put in there.
Once we give them up, how are we going to get them back?
You're not telling me nothing, Carolyn, and I've gotten more emails over this. I've gotten more phone calls over this, and it amazes me how we, as a city, allows this crap to go out.
That was my second question. Why are we allowing this to continue to happen? I mean, we can't do this to the people. People are already scared. People are already afraid. You know, they look to the city for guidance, and we're not getting any. None! I mean, city council is not reaching out and talking to the businesses. I mean, I'm hearing it all over town. So, how do we stand and come together as a team to save our town, to make our citizens feel comfortable, and to quit dividing everybody?
You know what I'll say, is anybody who thinks it's okay to suspend the Constitution, go down there and tell it to those four names on the wall right here in the west end of town. Go tell it to all them headstones in the cemetery over there.
Tell it to my brother who's 100% disabled.
Okay, I mean, tell it to those people, because the only person that could write something like that is someone that has lived their whole life with their security, their safety, and their freedom provided by somebody else, period. That's the only reason, only way that that could be rid.
I hear the mayor standing up for our constitutional rights all the time, but is anybody else going to help us fight this? I mean, it's out of hand. We have to work together as a team. We've got to quit dividing each other. There has to be a solution to the problem. We're here to help. If you guys come up with a plan and we can help you out, we're here. We made a bunch of phone calls today. There's lots of business owners that are willing to stand and help you guys fix this, but you've got to quit tearing each other apart.
What exactly are you fighting? What are you fighting?
I don't want to give up my constitutional rights.
So, you don't?
But why are we telling everybody to do it?
Who's telling now? I don't know what you're talking about.
The City of Grants. The newspaper article that came out. Did you see it? Can we give up our constitutional rights temporarily?
They did not call it constitutional rights.
It doesn't matter. That's what they are, okay? And for you to put out something like that as a city corner... No, wait a minute. You wait. You've interrupted me ten times. You can talk to her at a cool voice, Modi. Here's my point, though. Here's my whole point, guys. We're giving up our constitutional rights. We're allowing this lady to go on the newspaper, on Facebook, wherever she wants, and say whatever she wants with nothing coming from this council about it being wrong.
So, you're preaching constitutional rights, but I, as the city manager, do not have the First Amendment right to speech, right? That's what you're telling me? That I don't have the right to...
But you don't have the right to use public money to spend for that little...
I wrote that article on the weekend.
It doesn't matter.
I didn't write it on my time as the city manager.
It was paid for by the city.
That article, we don't pay for that article.
Where's Scott at? Because he told me you did. I got it right here in a text.
According to the newspaper...
Unless Don pays for it, I don't know. I don't...
The city pays for the city corner.
Maybe we do, I guess, because we get a section of the paper.
Yes, we do.
So, I didn't come here to fight with everybody. We've got to come together as a team. How do we do this?
No, you're right. You're right. We all need to come together.
We are. We're tearing our team. We're tearing our town apart.
That's why we're here. You know, we're trying to do some good for the community.
Right, but the city keeps posting these and scaring people.
Well, you know, I can't help that, but I'm just saying we're all here to help. You know, more ways than one for our community.
You can't help that?
It's your job to help.
Yeah, it's exactly your job.
I don't read the paper.
Well, no, but you're allowing...
I didn't allow anything. Don't point your finger at me, sir.
Okay, so then how is it getting into the paper?
I don't know. You tell me.
So, the message is coming through.
I didn't read it. I'm like, "Calm down. Chill." Come on. Come on, let's get back to Carolyn.
I have a copy of the paper. If you guys would like to take a look at it while you're sitting there.
So, what we're saying is this is coming across like the city is doing this to us.
You bet you do.
So, "City Corner, A Message From the City of Grants" is what is titled on that article.
It has my picture as the city manager.
Yes, it says, "City Corner, A Message From the City of Grants." So, we've got to come together.
What in there would scare anybody, Carolyn? What did I say in there that scares anybody?
When it comes to the argument of constitutional rights, my stance is we can all temporarily give up some of our rights to possibly help lower the spread of the virus and hopefully prevent our health system from becoming overwhelmed. Our health system here is not overwhelmed. But once you give up your rights, how do you get them back? You know, my brother and several other family members fought for our freedoms, fought for our constitutional rights. I can't go to my brother and say, "Oh, I'm going to give up my rights. You know, what you did for us doesn't matter." It's a message that comes off really wrong, especially when it's coming across saying the City of Grants. You know, to me, as a businessperson, we need to work together. We've got to find a common ground. It's masked people against no-masked people. It's open your business or don't open your business. We've got to find a way to make people work together as a team instead of trying to tear each other apart. So, going back to the parade...
We agree with that, Carolyn. We agree.
So, going back to the parade, that was instilling fear in our community. That's how I took it. That's how everybody that saw it, that I spoke to, took it. And now they're asking us to give up our constitutional rights temporarily. You can't give them up temporarily. They go away forever. How do we fight to get them back? Another war? Sacrifice more people? So, we've got to come to a common ground, you know? The thing on the Main Street program, that was put out by the city again. That was pitting local citizens...
We're not the Main Street. We did not put that out.
It's funded by the Main Street. The City of Grants funds the Main Street program.
We haven't funded Main Street for a while now, so I didn't even see that first.
Okay, then I apologize.
We didn't put that out.
I misunderstood, but I was told that that was part of the city's thing too.
Who let Main Street put it out there?
Will Yarborough.
Will Yarborough. Now you know.
And then there again, that's pitting our, that's dividing us still again there. You know, from a program that everybody thinks is ran by the city, and we're still dividing. We've got to come together. How do we do this? Any suggestions? Because I would love to hear some, because I'm tired of everybody fighting. It's getting out of hand. It is dividing this town. It is going to take us all under. We're not going to have a town left if we keep on this path.
Yeah.
So, how do we fix it, guys?
We've been getting a bad rap for the last few months.
We have a horrible rep, and it's from Facebook, the newspaper, TV, our council meetings. How do we fix it? We've got to do something. We need to do something positive for the community.
Amen.
You know, other counties...
Last Tuesday, we had a little ceremony out here in the park, and we consecrated the city to the vanguard of America.
Where was the advertisement, Modi?
Huh?
We never heard anything about it.
Well, that's because everybody was afraid. They're scared that the governor's going to come down here and write tickets. Everybody except for the fourth-degree knights and the St. Pius people that came over here and showed up for it.
So, I would love to support our city. You know, throw some stuff at us, guys. Let's do something fun for the community. Let's bring us back together instead of tearing us down. Because I can't take much more of this. My business won't take much more of this. My family's divided over this because they're hearing one side, and I'm doing my side. I have a daughter who hasn't spoke to me in three months because of COVID. Three months. Because she's hearing the governor. Give up this, give up this, give up this. I'm hearing my brother, who fought for our country, and he's saying, "You give it up, you're never going to get it back." So, come on, guys. Work as a team. Let's plan something fun for our town. Bring us back together. Because if we don't, this town is not going to exist. We're losing jobs. Bells is closing. Gordmans not coming in. The coal mines suffering. The power plants are closed. Jacob's just laid off. People are leaving us, and they're leaving partially because they don't want to stick around and find something else, because we're tearing each other apart at the throats.
You know, people don't want to come here because they see what's happening, right?
Exactly. So, what can we do to pull this together?
Just like you said, I think we need to come together as a community.
We do. Plan and plan a bit that we can do with social distancing. Bring people back together. You know, what about the events we used to do in the park? You can have a movie out there in social distance. We can bring the bands back to the Riverwalk. We've got to do something to save us, because if not, we're not going to have anything to save. You know, I'm very passionate. I'm not a political person. This is making me very political, because how else do we save it? We've got to start with you, guys. You're the leaders. Everybody looks to you. When we take away the parades, the rodeos, the races, the movie theaters still not open, what do these kids have to look forward to? Nothing.
Staying healthy.
You can do that with social distancing and following the guidelines.
You're right. David Newsen, you want to talk?
Oh, yeah, my time. Thank you.
Okay.
So, what can we do, guys? I mean, seriously, there's got to be something. How much did it cost us last year to do the movies in the park? I'm sure we could get ahold of the guy at the movie theater, and he would do something for us over there, because he's dying to have people back. Can we get ahold of a local band, support them, and let them go play at the Riverwalk? Bring the kids out. We can social distance. We've got to do something. We can't sit and wait anymore. The governor's tearing us apart. She's tearing the whole state apart. I don't care who's Republican, Democrat, socialist. It don't matter. We're people. We're social people. We have to be together. Now, how are you going to fix it? We've got to quit doing this, and we've got to work together and bring us back together. There's no other way to do it. I don't want to see my grandkids live in a socialist country because they have no rights, because we're losing them.
I agree with that 100%.
So, guys, come on, please. Throw something out. You know, I'm giving you ideas. Something. Give me some hope, that there's hope in this county, in this country that we live in, because I'm not seeing it. I'm seeing the divide. I'm seeing people just pitting each other against each other. One local business got turned in by a customer again. I mean, why are we doing this to each other? It's not right. That's not how we are. We are human beings, and we need to start acting like it, because this is ridiculous.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Diane? Paul, you want to come up with her?
All right, I can go with my time.
Okay, got it.
A couple of weeks ago, we were talking...
Louder, Diane.
You got it because I was, Carolyn.
We were talking a couple of weeks ago about, we have presented you guys with the petition from the small businesses.
Louder, Diane.
There's 83 businesses on this petition we brought to you guys. We asked for help. We reached out to you guys for help. And all we got back that night was a statement from the city manager stating that they had people reaching out to the businesses, asking them what they needed and if they were doing okay. I find this hard to believe. We made phone calls this afternoon. Everyone that we talked to, which was a total of 35 that we were able to get a hold of, not a single one had been contacted by city council, by city manager, by the chamber.
Can you name the 30, please?
No, I'm not going to name your names. I can tell you that there are exactly 35 on here. If you would like to look at it, I'd be happy to present it to you.
Tell me. I want to know who, because I've talked to a lot of people.
Here's the deal. When we made our phone calls today, we were specifically asked not to tell you guys their names, because they're afraid of backlash. They're afraid of backlash because they can see the division, just like Carolyn said. This is supposed to be a community. We can't save it if we can't get it together. When they see the city manager and the city council and everybody bickering and fighting and putting out conflictive statements, and I don't care how you want to split the hair. I did it. I didn't do it. It wasn't done under the city manager. I did it on the weekend. The point is, it had the city's name on it. It had the city manager's name on it, and that's who it was done by. Whether you did it on the weekend or not is totally irrelevant. You did it. And I would like to know also, where is the accountability? Because there should be a chain of events that happened before something goes out to the community. The city council was unaware of what was put in the paper. Why?
We don't, we don't, we don't, that's...
There should be a chain of accountability. It should not just be thrown out there will and nearly without anybody knowing what's going out with the city's name on it. And this flat out was opinion. It should not have been in the city manager's spot in the city corner. It should have been a letter to the editor, just like any of the rest of us would do. If you want to be counted as a citizen and it's the weekend, then you do a letter to the editor. You don't put it out under the City of Grants head, and that's just common sense. But back to the thing of the petition. Every business that we contacted this afternoon, which was a total of 35, who asked not to be named, were asked, "Have you been contacted by the city council, city manager, Chamber of Commerce in any way? Did they contact you? Did they ask you if you're doing okay? If there's anything they could do to help you?" No, down the line. I did not have one person say they had been checked on. Not a single person.
So, Chris is raising her hand. She's the one that...
But I'm not done. But I'm not done.
How many businesses have you called?
I called over 300 businesses. I did not call your pawn shop, because I saw on the news that you were open. I did do posts on Facebook about the restaurants that were open. I did talk to many businesses. You can call the businesses...
We did call. We got no.
Did you call Walmart? Did you...
Walmart's not a small business.
But they are a business in our town.
The point is, our small businesses are suffering, and you guys are doing nothing to help them. What we did was we asked them if they had been contacted, if they had been asked if they needed help. Then we were told no down the line. Then we asked them, "If you had been contacted and asked if there was something that the city could do to help you, what would your response have been?" Some said, "There's nothing they can do to help me, because this is hopeless." That's where we're at. However, we did have some that responded. We had some that said there need to be stepped-up police patrols to stop vandalism and to save time going to court trying to get the money back against the people who committed the vandalism. Some said they need workers. They're unable to get workers, because nobody wants to go to work when they can sit home on unemployment. So, they're suffering because they can't get workers. I had businesses who said they would be thrilled had the chamber or the city done the effort to put out some extra advertising for them. These businesses are still open. Please check in on these businesses. Go frequent them. Give them your business. I had it brought to my attention that a business was given an award from the chamber, but the chamber never called them. No contact.
Who's that? Who was that? I want to hear that one. Who was given the award?
I'll just say it was the best new business of the year. And then I talked to several big businesses who are on the small end of the businesses, but do a bigger volume. And you know what they had to say? They could have supported our opening. We have many cities across the state who have chose to join together and do the right thing and open their cities. Our mayor tried. He got no support, except from the small businesses. And then the governor put out a warning that frightened everybody back into their rabbit holes, so four of us opened that day. I'm tired. I'm tired of the battle. I'm tired of the garbage that's going on behind closed doors. I'm tired of people being pitted against each other. I'm tired of tattletales. I'm tired of snitches. It's ridiculous. I want to know what the city council is going to do for these small businesses. I don't care about Walmart. Walmart's going to make it hell or high water. I want to know what's going to happen for these small businesses that signed this petition and asked for help. There should be a plan in place. You know, Hobbs took the effort, and their city manager and their city council went through and offered an option to their restaurants to have a tent. If they didn't have patio dining, they were made a tent available so they could have patio dining, so they could earn some money and pay their employees and pay their bills.
Who funded that?
The city mayor and city council.
But, yes, we love to help everybody, but that's a lot of money.
Okay, so do a grant. There's got to be something. There's got to be...
There's got to be something, but by the time you write a grant, processing, you get it.
So, what's your idea, Eric? What is it? Because these businesses are going down the drain, and they'll never come back. Do you want Grants to look like it did when the mines closed? Because that's where we're headed. And yeah, I'm old enough to remember that, and y'all should be too. This is going to go back to being the ghost town that it was before. Why are we not supporting each other? We have some small businesses and some citizens that are working their butts off to try to help each other. What can we do to help you? How can we make this easier on you? This doesn't have to be our undoing, but if we don't get it together, it's going to be. People can't go months and months and months with no income. The bills didn't stop. The governor closed the businesses. Their utilities didn't stop. Their rent didn't stop. Their mortgage didn't stop. Their car payments didn't stop. Oh, they got a $1,200 stimulus check. Whooped you out. That's a spit in the barrel. I don't want to hear any more blame. I don't want to hear any more laying it off. I didn't. It wasn't. I don't care. Y'all are in charge. And the statement I heard over and over from these businesses is, "We're getting no support." None. There's no ideas. There's nobody coming through our doors. I have not seen one of you, except for the mayor, come into our business. Not one. How many of you have gone to reruns? How many of you have darkened any of the other doors of these small businesses? You should be out there showing your faces and coming up with ideas and asking them how you can help. That's your job. That's why you're here. You're supposed to be the leaders. I'm not seeing any leadership at all, and it's disgusting. Y'all are, you continue to get your checks and make your bills. What about these businesses that are struggling? Have you gone down the streets and looked? It's depressing. And the more fear-mongering statements that are put out, the more people hide. The more people hide, the worse this is going to get. I want answers. I want a plan, and I want it yesterday. This started, we've been doing this now since March. We're almost to August, and nobody has a plan? Not a single plan? And the only people that are doing any work are the small businesses trying to network and keep their heads above water?
My plan was to open, Diane.
I know your plan was to open, but we got no support, so four of us opened and put our necks out.
I mean...
Four of us.
That was my plan. And that still is my plan. Put everybody back to work.
Other cities are doing it?
Yes, they are.
Why can't we? Why can't we open? Why can't you put the support behind your people and back them and get us open? I want to know.
What cities are opening up, you know?
Yeah.
Which ones?
Roswell? Hobbie? Marjorie?
I don't see others at Roswell actually, also.
There are cities who are opening. What difference does it make who they are? That's your guys' jobs to find out. Why aren't you networking? Why aren't you calling the other city councils?
I haven't heard of anybody opening up.
Well, they are. That's a lame one, because it's everywhere. How do we know it and you don't? You're part of a city council. You're supposed to have network. Why don't you know what's going on out there?
Well, I've been on the network calls, and a lot of people are very aggravated, just like we are. There's a lot of issues, same as we're having, but I've not heard of any that have actually opened. The closest to that were the restaurants that said they were going to go ahead and open. Across the state, there was a few that were advertised, and they all got citations, and they quickly closed down.
Okay, now, hang on. Let's stop. Let's stop right there, okay? I got information from my attorneys. There's only been five citations issued in this state for $5,000. Five.
Did you make the cut?
Yes, I did. One of them are churches and restaurants, period, and this is before. And I'm the only individual in the state that has been targeted. But they can't make up their mind if they're targeting me as the mayor, because I'm exempt from it as the mayor. I'm exempt from their health order, okay? It's in the health order. I'm exempt from it. Or are they targeting me as an individual that held a protest like Black Lives Matter? Because none of those people got a fight. But, oh, no, this guy right here did. And you want to know why I did? Because of my stand, guys, against what they're doing. Because of my stand for the Constitution and my oath of office. That's the only reason. That pesky oath of office that keeps coming back, guys, period.
Hi.
So, that's where we're at with all those. Mr. Pines?
Can I talk to this?
Yes, go ahead, Eric.
So, I don't know. I... I hear you, ladies. I honestly do. I hear you.
Then prove it.
Prove it.
Come on, Eric. You know you can prove it to us.
Well, here's my, I mean, I've been thinking about this. I go for a lot of bike rides, and I've been thinking about this quite a bit. And yes, something needs to change. We need to have an event. We need to do something to bring our communities together. What I'm asking the governor, and I know she's watching, because you know, she loves this guy. She's watching. No disrespect to you, but I do ask that you let the cities, the municipalities, the leaders in there make their own decisions.
Yes.
If there is that virus that's out there and you need this to protect yourself, then I respect you for having that. But if you don't believe in this, then I respect you for that also. But it should be on our own discretion on what we're doing. You know? You're going to get mad at me in here in a minute.
Free Americans.
Okay, so, you know, we want to have an event. We want to, we want to... I don't know what we can do as far as event. We want to make things funner, right? We want to make our community funner. We want to open up. You know, I asked the governor, again, you know, "Let us make our own decisions here." It's very... It's very difficult for us, and I think it's difficult for you to understand, that we are small businesses here. Franchises like Walmart, Home Depot, Lowe's, Walgreens, they have the capital to withstand some of this stuff that's going on. Small businesses don't. It's very difficult. Probably 85% of our people in our community are small business. And it's very difficult. Let us make the decision. But if you want to wear the mask, then wear it. If you don't, then fine. You know, we shouldn't be yelled at, like I was yelled at at Home Depot today, because I had my mask right here. Yelled at by an employee, wanted to slap the shit out of him. I was angry, and I should not be angry. Because that's something stupid, but it's starting to piss me off. I rode my bike up to the mountain the other day. And I wear this quite a bit, because the gallop, they do not, it's different over there. So, I rode my bike up to the mountain the other day and I was wondering why my lung capacity sucks. And it's because I've been breathing my own shit in for a long time. I'm getting tired of it. But the people who still believe in this, I respect you. I will wear my mask around you if you want me to. For funds, we hold the best race in New Mexico, the Mount Taylor Winter Cadaflon, right? President's Day weekend, it's freezing. You want to do something funny, Governor, let's open it up. And I will run the race in freezing cold weather, painted head to toe with underwear, with the New Mexico flag all above me in freezing. I heart my governor here, and you know who on my backside? If you lift our restrictions, come on, we got to have it fun. We need to have some humor around here. We need to have events, you know, this, do me a favor. Quit watching social media, quit watching the news. I did it 30 days ago and I'm a happier person. I want to make sure what's better for my community. And everything else beyond my community, I love you guys, but right now is what I'm worried about, right now is here. I'm losing fans all over the place for saying what I believe in right now. But that's how I feel. We need to open our schools again. My wife, she's a strong person. She broke down the other day, pissed me off. Because we cannot do it, we are not educators. Governor, I know you're watching, you want to do something great, give the educators a raise. They deserve it. We need change. And I don't, we should not look at, in cases, we should look at deaths. Here in our community, yes, there's been a few, and I'm sorry to the families who have had it. But you're looking at the wrong thing. We're actually causing more and more hate in our community. And I proved it today, and it dawned on me when I was in Home Depot and I yelled. That's not me. And you think about it, someone can get pissed off, pull a gun, fight. You could piss the wrong person off. For what? This stupid thing? Hey, I'm not done yet.
1/10 of a percent of New Mexico has been positive for COVID. 1/10 of a percent. We're going to kill our economy, boys, guys.
I don't know. I mean, I throw my hands up. I really, this sucks. I'm done.
Ronnie?
Uh, thank you. That's a great piece of news, Eric, that you're pissed off. That's great. Because now you know how the businesses that signed this petition in April feel. Just like people already spoken feel, like I feel. So I appreciate that, I appreciate it. I guess I have to make the comment, I'm glad it finally soaked in. I was here three weeks ago, my name's Ronnie Pines. I don't care if the governor's watching or not. And I don't care who knows who, one of the 35 that was contacted today. I was one of them, and so I'm not afraid of who knows that, just for the record. But I'd like to ask you a few questions, kind of repeats from three weeks ago. I had quite a few questions I got I don't know, and then I had a few that I did get answers. I did get the courtesy after I asked my questions at the last meeting. I got courtesy, got a text message from Eric Garcia, thank you, Eric. And I did get a phone call Thursday from Laura, I told her thank you. I don't know that she was exactly excited after the phone call conversation that she did call me, but we did talk about several topics. One being, just what Eric hit on. And you made the comment, Laura, you said you had reached out, you, the city managers throughout the state. I want to quote you, so correct me if I misunderstood, that you had reached out to the governor to try to allow us to do just what has been mentioned here. Let us govern ourselves. That's what this petition asks you guys to do in April. Same thing, same thing. Nothing new. Your answer was, you pleaded with the governor, that's what you told me. You said that your group, the city managers, had pleaded with the governor because you said what? One size does not fit all, is what you told me. That's the point Eric's making. 85% is probably a real accurate guess on small businesses. 83 of them on this petition, we ask you for guidance and leadership. That's what we ask you for. Personally, I told you this, Laura, don't mind telling you, don't mind telling the governor public, I just assume everybody keeps their opinions to themselves, they're like yours, everybody's got them. Okay? When it comes to my constitution, I got my beliefs, but I don't try to spread those and share them with anybody else. So I don't like the fear, I told you about the letter that you put in on the Facebook or the behalf of the city before the July 4th. I did not appreciate that, I told you I resented that, I do, still do. Anyway, back to this petition. How many of you actually went and got this, looked it up, read it? After, I mentioned, I know Mayor has. Did anybody else go take the time and energy to go look at this? Eric did, so, Mr. Padilla, thank you. I assumed that everybody would do that, so I assumed wrong, so I figured I assumed wrong, so I made copies. I'll give to the ones who have not read it. Maybe you will read it. These names are not bashful, these people put their name and their contact information asking and pleading for your help. This is not new, this is in April. This is a public document, it's filed with the city clerk's office. And I do not know, and I do not understand why all those city councillors haven't taken this to heart, taken action on it, I do not understand that. The other things that I quizzed about last, three weeks ago, last meeting was, what's the impact on our city budget with all the small business closures? Wasn't really sure, Eric mentioned a couple of times about the numbers coming in for May. I don't know what that meant, but I also asked about how many layoffs that the city is looking at. Is there any kind of idea on the number of employees that may have to be laid off?
We're not planning on laying off, we're planning on not filling positions that are emptying out. And so there's probably eight or so positions of people that have left, retired, various things over the last six months, that we're not filling those positions. So we're trying to handle it that way.
Okay, attrition, I guess, okay, thank you. I did ask you over the phone, because I got no takers last time I spoke here, three weeks ago. Carolyn, I think, mentioned her, Diane, that when you have three, four months without a paycheck, things change. And I didn't get any volunteers three weeks ago, and I asked you on the phone, Laura, would you be willing to do without your paycheck three or four months?
Yes, I would, to help other people.
I don't notice any other employees volunteering to do that, and I would not expect them to, that's not my point.
You can have my check.
And that's not why I'm here. But what I'm saying is, is I'd like for you to understand where you stand sometimes depends on where you sit. With small businesses, as these two ladies spoke earlier, you don't have revenues coming in, all expenses keep going on. You have people's attention. You have people's attention, and I told you that on the phone, didn't I, Laura? So please take this to heart, please read this, look through it, look through it. These are not signatures that were forfeited. These are some, people wanted to know if they could sign it more than once. They really were hopeful that we could depend on you guys to help us. You can lead by example, and you can certainly take the leadership of our city, and you can do it without the governor. You don't have to have the governor, said that last time. She doesn't sign Laura's check, she doesn't sign any of, she doesn't sign my check. She's never been in my place of business. We have an excellent police department, excellent fire departments, well-funded, well-trained. We do not have to have the governor. I'm sorry. So I can do without her, I hope you guys understand you can do without her. But our city needs your help, these businesses need your help, that's what. So I'd like to give to the ones who have not seen this. And I'm sorry I didn't give it to you last time, but I'll make sure you have it this time, and I will probably be back. Thank you.
Ronnie, what's the businesses that are still, I mean, I know the theater is, I've talked to Troy, I've talked to some of the restaurants that are still open. So who else is out there, am I missing someone? Who else is out there that's not?
That's not open?
The liquor stores.
The liquor store, okay. Liquor stores, the, they, the...
Barbershops?
Barbershops not open, thank you.
Are they open?
No, they're not.
I don't know, sure, barbershop. The veterans, the veterans, BFW, it's open.
BFW's closed, the American Legion's closed.
And I understand, I talked to them when I got the tickets. I talked to them in person.
And Elks Lodge is closed.
And this was five weeks ago, six weeks ago, two months ago, a long time ago, that they relied on those veterans coming in at door to help them stay open. And they serve veterans, so they're closed.
The Knights of Columbus, I mean, they lost graduations, they lost weddings.
The churches, churches, that affected.
We've got Knights of Columbus, our houses are tied up in that building. And it's getting tight.
Anyway, those...
Real tight.
Please read this, please look at it, you'll get a very good cross-section of who. By the way, statistics wise, out of 83 that signed this, we went to 84, I think I told you this last meeting. Out of 84 businesses, we had 83 that supported this. And to my knowledge, what is our, how many businesses, small businesses license in grants? 300, 350? That's roughly a fourth of them. We did this in 36 hours. Two of us. Knocked on doors, looked them in the eye, got their signatures, explained what it's about. They said, please, please, please. In 36 hours, we did 83 signatures. That's a fourth of all the businesses. Has anyone here done that? That question's already been asked. That's what we're asking. Please, get out there, listen, look, let's come up with a game plan. You won't have to ask us twice to help. The small businesses are here. We hope we're here to stay, so thank you.
Thank you. Public comment and discussion on our charter. I'm going to take this, okay? Beverly Michael came in here last week, made a big old scene about how we were out of compliance with our charter. So let me go back and refresh everybody's memory on what happened with the charter. Martin Chavez, Mayor of Albuquerque, decided that he didn't want to follow their charter no more. So he took the city of Albuquerque to court, and he won. And the Supreme Court ruled that any charter that has nonpartisan elections, turn limits are unconstitutional. Okay? So that's where it all started at. Fast forward a couple of years, first councillor to try to do it was Fred Regarte. The people voted him down. The second ones were T. Walter Jaramillo, Joe Muyeta. The people voted them down. The third person to do it, the fourth person to do it was Judge Larson. She won. If y'all noticed, there was not a mention about Judge Larson here at all that night, she was sitting right there. But she's the one that violated the charter by winning the election that made us come and change the charter. Okay? If the people would have upheld that election, we wouldn't be here now. But they didn't. And you also noticed that Beverly Michael didn't mention a word about the councillors that voted to bring the charter in compliance with the Supreme Court. Okay? Everything she said that night was just an attack on me. The part about me having a gun out here when I was having the opening of the city, that was a lie. I did not have a gun on me, I had it in my truck. And anybody who knows me knows I've got a gun on me all the time. I've been doing it since. I came home from the Marine Corps. I've always carried a gun. I don't know why people freak out on that. Okay, especially considering my background in law enforcement and how many times I've been threatened over the last five months. Okay? So those are the facts about the charter. We are in compliance with our charter. We have been in compliance with the charter. Thank you very much. Next, approval of the regular city council meetings from 7:06.
Yeah, I approve, I'd like to approve of that.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councillor Regarte?
Yes.
Councillor Palia?
Yes.
Councillor Lucero?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Approval of city council meetings from special meeting on July 10.
They also approved the special city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Second.
Councillor Regarte?
Yes.
Councillor Palia?
Yes.
Councillor Lucero?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia? Yes, no, maybe? Eric? Yes. Application for appointments to the cemetery board. I would like to, these are reappointments for Cecilia Muyeta, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Councillor Regarte?
Yes.
Councillor Palia?
Yes.
Councillor Lucero?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Next, reappointment, Floyd Garcia.
I make a motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councillor Regarte?
Yes.
Councillor Palia?
Yes.
Councillor Lucero?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Informational presentation on industrial bond.
So you have Linda Melindressis here this evening, and she's going to talk to us a little bit about how industrial revenue bonds work. Good evening, councillor and mayor. I represent the city as bond councillor. And I'm here today just to just to discuss the topic of industrial revenue bonds. I just wanted to describe generally what IRVs or industrial revenue bonds are, the laws that provide the city with the authority to issue IRVs, and just how they're structured generally. And if you have any questions, please let me know as I'm going through. An IRV is just a debt security. But it's a little bit unique because it's not exactly a true financing. It's merely a mechanism used to provide tax incentives for development. It differs from a true bond financing in that the lender doesn't buy the bonds. Rather, the lender makes a loan to a private company who then uses those loan proceeds to fund either the acquisition, the construction, or equipping of the project. And the lender's not a party to the transaction. So it only involves the city, the company, and if it's the company's subsidiary, depending on how the company is structured. IRVs are a form of private activity bond. And what it is, is the IRVs are payable solely out of the revenue that would be derived out of the project. So they're a form that's issued on behalf of a private company. And the purpose would be for financing these certain projects for the benefit of the community. In fact, the city is prohibited from paying principal and interest payments on these bonds. They're not, they're not, they're not a general obligation, they don't constitute indebtedness of the city, and they don't charge against the city's general taxing or taxing powers or general credit. Pursuant to the laws of Sections 332.1 through 332.16, the city is authorized to issue IRVs to promote the proper balance between agriculture, commerce, and industry. And the statutes allow for many different projects, industry-wise and commercial-wise. So there's a list of exactly what the cities are authorized to have these projects come into the city to try and create more jobs, to allow for renovation of properties, to bring more industry into the community. So how IRVs are structured is that the property comprising the project would be deeded from the company. So a company would come in, purchase either the land or the building that they're looking to have this project in, whether it's industry or hotel or whatever it is. And then that title would pass to the city, so it would be under the city's tax rolls. Then the city would automatically lease back that property so that the lease payments would then be payments for the bonds. So really, the city is a passive conduit. So it wouldn't, the city wouldn't be borrowing any money, the company would be the borrower. And the city wouldn't be paying any of the debt service. So the company would be paying that debt service through, just pass through, right to the bondholders. So, the company would be paying that debt service through, just pass through, right to the bondholders. So, that's really how these bonds are structured. I know that I've come to you several times, and we're gonna be finishing up and closing on the general obligation bonds. And these really are a separate entity from what the general obligation bonds are. You know, the general obligation bonds, you go out to the public, you have an election, whether they're approved by the voters, then you borrow that money, and the city has a general obligation to pay back those bonds. This really is a private transaction, which is a tax incentive to try to bring companies' industry into the city of Grants. And just as going forward, just to kind of lay out exactly what this looks like, first, companies would come in if they wanted to apply or ask the city if they would be amenable to doing these types of transactions. The city would get background information on these companies, make sure this is something that you want in your community. And then, you would have an intent resolution that the council would approve. And we would obviously have, just this says that you want to work with this company. That first resolution would not obligate the city to actually issue bonds. That would be the next step. So, the first step really is just, we kind of think that we want to start working with this company. Then, the next would be going through terms, you know, what the project is, how much it would cost, what types of jobs would be brought into the community, all of those things that you're looking at. You also want to look at what property tax is actually coming in as revenue from the city because that would then not be happening during the term of the bonds. So, you would forego your property tax on that property to try and create more development and more jobs. Just more economic development versus straight property tax revenue for the city. So, these are all things that need to be obviously looked at and determine if this is a benefit for the city and if this is something that the council would want to move forward with, if it's a company that you want to work with, you want in the community. All of these things are things that would need to be seriously considered by the city. And once you move forward and have kind of those terms, then you would go to a public hearing, and you would have an ordinance which would go through all of the issuance and the details of the IRV bonds. But that's kind of the general idea of what industrial revenue bonds are. If you have any questions, please let me know. I'm happy to discuss more in detail on any of the statutes or any of the kind of intricacies of this unique transaction.
Questions? So, is this something new that has been developed, or...?
It's not new, but... And actually, you know, there have been several cities that have done projects. For instance, there are some hotels that were by... They were renovated and redone by our IRVs. So, it's not new, but it's just, it's kind of a quirky thing in the statutes. And it's usually led, and now even more popular with solar, and power companies coming in and using IRVs for solar and power. But it's not a new thing.
Is it attractive to businesses?
That's something... I know that Sandoval County has been really trying to up their IRVs that come in, trying to get more businesses. And I think that that just depends on the company. It's a good tax incentive for most companies. But again, the benefits sometimes don't outweigh for the city. And so, for instance, if a power company, or a solar company, or, you know, some company would come in and say, "Oh, we want to work with the city." And you're saying, "Okay, you want us to give, you know, a hundred acres of land," which, you know, the idea is that the... Is the... Right, well, the idea is that the property tax and the incentive for the city doesn't really go towards what the city wants. So...
Now, is it something that... Is it something the city... Is it something the city initiates, or is it something that companies initiate?
So, what... We actually have had a company come to us to ask if they could work with the city. So, in this instance, it has been the company that has initiated this conversation. Sandoval County, and I'm not sure of other places. I know they have on their website an application so that if companies are looking for places to potentially locate, they can go on the website and see that this is an option that the county has. And so, that, I think, is more the county kind of opening itself up and advertising a little bit more as to the fact that they have the ability and the want to get industry in to have these IRVs. But for the two main places that I worked with, it was companies that came specifically to the cities and asked if they could work with them.
Now, do you highly recommend this type of product?
I think it absolutely depends on a specific project and company and the city. I think that it's very, very specific, fact-specific. So, I think that the city should be open to this, to have companies come in, and you definitely vet them and see exactly what the project looks like. And if it's advantageous to the city, then obviously, that would be... I would... If it's advantageous to the city, I would say, "Go for it." If it's something that is either kind of medium, or not very advantageous, or disadvantaged, then no, I don't think that the city should just start taking on IRVs, just to take on IRVs.
So, what companies that you've dealt with, what large companies have you dealt with that have used this? That came in for a city that was attractive?
So, Southern Power came to, down in the south, that I worked with. And the company right now that has reached out to us is called Invest New Mexico.
And their employee number?
I don't know. Again, this is the very initial part of it. And what I wanted to do was just give some background information of what this process looks like. And if the council is interested in moving forward and having you do more research and get more information about this company and what their project looks like, then I'm happy to do that.
So, it's a company that already wants to come in?
There's a couple of businessmen that are looking at purchasing the Red Lion and creating basically a type of cultural center, Indian cultural center, and rooms to stay at, and places where vendors could sell artwork. So, they're exploring that idea, but they wanted us to start thinking about if we would be willing to sponsor the IRV bonds. And so, I wasn't familiar with how that works.
How much money does that company bring in?
I don't know at this point, but... So, what we'd be looking for is jobs, for someone to bring jobs and bring industry that has...
But what do they want to bring in? We need to know the history. They want to bring in two employees, they want to bring in thirty. How much money does it come in? So, then maybe I would entertain, or we would entertain, what you got going on. Because if they want X amount of money, and they employ two or three people, or they only bring in X amount of gross cease tax, no, I want bigger.
Right, absolutely. And I think that that is the next step for me to go back and have them fill out some of the descriptions that they need to provide for the informational background. Exactly, yes. And the idea was just to bring this in front of you today so that you understand kind of what an IRV is. And then, we can move forward if you would like me to move forward.
Any other questions?
Probably our next step.
The next step would be for me to have them fill out some informational questions that I can put together and send to the council so that they can look at. If they have other questions, we can add those questions for them to provide as much information as the council wants. And then, I would draft an intent resolution if everything looks like it's going well, that we would be willing to entertain working with this company.
Business plan is what we really want to see. The business plan will give us everything we need. It'll give us a number of employees, what they're gonna do, what the building's gonna look like, everything else. I don't know a lot about how the council feels, but everything else for me is secondary. Give me a business plan because that gives us everything you need.
Show me how much money you're gonna be making.
Exactly. Show me how many employees you're gonna give us. That's what it's about. Because if we don't get nothing on the property taxes, we're relying on their payment, and they're not making their payment to cover that bond.
Well, and that is... We would not... The city would not be...
Wouldn't be liable for it.
Right, would not be liable for them, exactly. Exactly right, Mayor. But yes, and I'm happy to go forth and do continue to start working on this. I just wanted to let you all know where we are.
I think it'd be well worth the city to begin to explore this.
Yes.
I agree.
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you so much. Thank you for letting me speak with you. Thank you.
USDA Waste Water System Improvement Phase One Engineering Services Agreement.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor, Council, about two years ago, this council gave us a... Gave the city's administration a thumbs up to come up with a long-term plan for the aging infrastructure, water and wastewater. And so, anyway, the plan that was chosen, we went after USDA grant loan and the GOBonds. So, that's what we chose. And now, the PERs have been done, preliminary engineering report on the water system, and one on the wastewater system. And anyway, tonight, Wilson and Company is here tonight to give us, give you guys an update on where we're at in the project.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Mayor, Council. We'll go to the next slide, please. As Don pointed out, it was two separate projects. USDA loan grant combination for water system improvements and for wastewater. Next slide. So, you can see from the screen, and you'll see here in a little while too, in one of the slides, back in October of 2019, we gave this council an update, and I'm gonna show you one of the schedules where we were just at that point in time getting started with the preliminary engineering reports through this council. We're happy to report that the process, which began with an RFA, request proposal that the city put out on September eighteen, 2019, to provide the services, they're all identified there in red, starts with what we call an RD apply, rural development apply, application, inclusive of that application is a preliminary engineering report, and a categorical exclusion with environmental report. At that time, the committee, when it started, I believe it was Mark, Don, and Francis as part of procurement, at least were the folks that were in the interview, or part of that selection committee, that went through that process, where we were successful in winning that. And then, on January thirteenth, the process started for the RD apply. Next slide. On May twenty-first of this year, the city received what we call the letter of conditions that awarded phase one of wastewater system improvements. And we have a map of that that we'll show you. Then, on July fourteenth, the city received, again, a second letter of conditions from USDA, a warning phase one of the water system improvements. The next step is to move forward with both of those preliminary and final design through the course of this year. Next slide. Here, in a minute, I'll introduce our senior engineer that's been leading that effort. The numbers are... Should be important, I'm sure, to this council and to the manager. The May thirteenth, that award is three million in loan, almost two million in grant. You can see the schedule down at the bottom. This is a schedule that some of you might recall from October of last year, when we had just started the process. Next slide. And then, the second letter of conditions that we were talking about, similar, they're not exact matching numbers, but similar numbers, about three point three in loan and one point six in grant. Next slide. And so, I'm gonna have... I'm gonna introduce Mark Nassi, if he would come all the way down here, please. And I'm gonna have him walk you through how the areas were evaluated, how we came up with the priorities of what a phase one is, as well as Mark here with Public Works can answer some of the more detailed questions concerning the system improvements.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Everybody can hear me okay? I'm not used to end this mic, but... We did the evaluation. There was an asset management planned out a few years ago that evaluated your water sewer system for age and condition. We took that information, and as you can see in the map, you can see how the city of Grants has been developed through the years. We have, on the far west side, was built mainly in the forties and fifties. And that was the worst condition of the pipe along Santa Fe Avenue in that section just west of here. So, it was most of the area from west of here to the interchange.
That's the red one?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, on the far left. The red and the pink ones.
So, you're saying that's the oldest part of Grants?
Yeah. According to the asset inventory that we got from doing an evaluation of the existing water system. There might be some other spots in there that are, you know, old, but we decided with the utility department to pick out the oldest section and try to make it into a fun bowl range with the USDA. And the other ones, and the phases, would just go by kind of the age of the system as it goes through. The second one is in the middle. We know we have a lot of, you know, some problems in there with some sewer backing up and some other things associated with it. So, we did come up with a nice plan. We'll end up doing a hydraulic model for the system and make sure that the water system has enough capacity for now and your future. There's some other undersized lines, there has some fire flow issues, some low pressures. And all this will be taken care of one stage at a time as we move through this process. But, you know, ten million dollars, we'll take a big chunk of it and get you started. I don't think USDA grant loan has been in the city of Grants for a long time. So, this is some good money, and it's based on your income. It's... The loan grant is based on your population, which is under ten thousand. So, you fall right below that threshold. Any questions?
The next two maps will show just the sewer and the water. So, let's go to the next slide.
So, this is the water one. After some discussion, one of the main aspects is to run the, a big, a better water line for more capacity and some fire flow across there. The green. All this is water right here.
You've got blue and green?
Blue and green.
The green is the proposed project.
The blue is the proposed project, too. The ones that you really can't see are not being replaced. The green one is a...
We'll get you some maps, do some physical maps, and you can start.
So, the green one is a big ten-inch line going across the interstate for the community over there that does not have fire flow at this point in time, which also will help in some community development that the city might have.
When is the green one starting to be done?
The process now is we'll do design, I mean, letter of conditions for the LOC in a year, and then, we'll have a construction next year about December.
With the Councilor Garcia, Mayor, with the winter season, as you know, we're gonna... We'll have it ready right after twenty twenty-one winter season so that we can start at the end of March.
Right.
Or early part-time. But go back to that slide, just so that there's clarity for the council.
For the... This one, or the...
With the one that had the green and the blue on the water system?
Is that crossing the interstate, aren't they?
Yes.
That's what we chose, right?
Yes.
We are building, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, the blue, magenta, and green show different sized line systems that you're putting in, but we're building all of that, correct?
Yes.
So, just to be clear, the color is coding based on pipe size.
Yeah, well, they'll be sized appropriately. Sometimes, you have some small six-inch lines in there that, when you have high demand, which you've been growing in the past twenty, thirty years, it just doesn't have enough capacity. So, when you turn on the hybrid, it flows and then stops. So, you know...
Don, what's the size line across the interstate?
What is it? Six inches right now.
Six inches.
Yeah, that's been a big issue for development on that end of town since the water hasn't been sufficient enough. With this upgrade, it'll be... You could do some development on the other side of the freeway, actually.
So, for the public, real quick, that green line, it's very important because the water flow over there is very... You only have a six-inch line. So, a lot of times when we decide on the east side, we always ask as public... So a lot of times when we decided on the east side, we always ask us public, why doesn't stuff get expanded? Why don't we have this or why do we have that? Why isn't it all attractive for a restaurant or something to come through? The problem is, is that the infrastructure sucks. So if they can't have the adequate amount of water flow to fight fires, then that property doesn't look attractive to them because then they have to put the infrastructure in place. So if we do this, hopefully in two years, obviously, we're going to have the rodeo thing. Hopefully, we're going to have that. So you're going to have adequate stuff. So it's going to make stuff more attractive to restaurants, hotels and whatnot, and a truck stop because we need to take whatever Milan is doing over there also. Sorry, Milan, I love you, but we need to learn to.
So the green and blue, that whole project, we have three years to complete that?
Yes.
And this 5 million will cover that whole thing?
Yes, for the water.
So not the waste line, the sewer's a whole new ballgame, right?
Yeah, another $5 million for the sewer. In that same area. The reason we picked the same area is because...
But that water sewer is a part of it.
What? No, hey, but by the time you do water sewer and do the patchwork, it pretty much makes it clean. A section, so we take care of most of that, or we do that.
So Mayor, just to be clear, because that's an excellent question. And for the audience, when you do sewer and water, we're required to have a 10-foot separation horizontally, right? And then the normal cut in the standard repair of the industry will save four feet maximum. So if you just did water alone, it's four foot wide, right? When you compare sewer and water together, the same street, you're going to have roughly, using round numbers, 10 plus two feet on either side, roughly 14, but you have roads that are 30 foot wide. And so one of the things that we've been talking about is...
Put it in the sidewalks, man.
I'm sorry?
Put it in the sidewalks.
Put it in the sidewalks.
Put it in these sidewalks where you just pop up a concrete deal and you're not digging in pavement, guys. It's real smart and it's real simple and it works in the big cities. Why not here?
Except if the road's bad, then you might as well, you know, pave a road.
Why? Because then you're going to dig it up again when you have bad water and the water line breaks because it's going to break 30, 40 years down the line and you're going to be digging in that pavement again. Put it in the sidewalk, guys, because then you pop one concrete deal, you fix it, you pour one little slab of concrete and we're not freaking paving roads, guys.
And the main problem with, the main solution to this is along Santa Fe, that sewer line or the water line is going right down the middle.
Right down the middle of the road.
Red, middle road. So what we're doing on this one is moving it to the far edge of the shoulder on both sides of the DOT. So when there's breaks and you can tap on both sides for the water.
Okay, but we already did that once over here by the gun shop, all the way coming from...
We did about 1,200, then you're eight, yeah, about 10, 12 years ago, yes.
Right there in the parking lane. I don't have a problem with the parking lane, but I'd really rather see it in the sidewalk, guys. Because, I mean, even when you're tearing up the parking lane, it affects the road. And if you've got it in the sidewalk, it doesn't affect the roads at all, guys. And it makes so much more sense. And in the long run, it's the only way to go.
We'll look at it.
Water on one side under the sidewalk, sewer on the other side under the sidewalk. Anything goes wrong, you're popping the sidewalk off the road.
So Mayor, what we can do is we can, of course, it takes us to give you guys information. So as we get going into the preliminary design, before we get down too far, we'll look at it and we'll come back and report to this council. Get some drawings to be able to show you. If it works, we'll do it, right?
So what's more expensive, cement or asphalt?
Typically, concrete by square, well, by square foot comparison, concrete is more expensive. But the mayor brings up a good point because you have soil conditions that are bad no matter where you're going.
Bad, no matter what.
Or the roadway, right? So we always have to treat the foundation regardless, but concrete is always more expensive.
And if the concrete, guys, on the sidewalk, it's five foot wide. We're not doing 14 foot. We're doing five-foot sections. Boom, and I mean, I guarantee you, it'll work out of the wash.
Yeah, we'll do a cost analysis.
But the maintenance cost will go way, way down.
Mayor, another thing you have to consider with the Loma is there's a lot of lava.
Oh, I understand that.
So sometimes...
I've been here my whole life, Mark. I watched them dig it up over there at Fred's house and bang it all the way down.
Right.
I watched First Street, I've watched Second Street. No, I got it, Mark. But it's not going to make any difference if it's in the road or in the sidewalk.
But if we're using some of these, the cost analysis is probably going to show that using the same trench versus having to go down into Malpe again and create a new trench.
I'll bet you money, when you start digging up them lines, you're going to have exactly what we had up here on Iron Street where the pipe goes.
Up and around.
Whichever rock is in the way because they never busted it out.
Yeah.
So we won't know till we get in there and dig it up. And that's why it always makes me mad when engineers say, oh, it's only going to cost this much. Because you don't know until you dig the crap up. And I mean, I've done this now for almost 16 years. We've done some bridges, we've done some roads, we've done some sidewalks. So yes, I've got a real good clue how it works, especially in our area.
So when we come back, we'll have good information because we'll have the geotechnics. And then in Grants, it's a little unique. We're also dropping phasometers so we can do water table measures because all of those things influence construction costs.
Yes.
And we put all that in the construction costs as elements because we anticipate that happening. So that $5 million, we should be able to get everything.
And if we're lucky enough where the trenches are right, where we can save that money, great.
Sure.
But I'm not holding my breath on that, guys. We've done this too many times. But you should have seen the beask that we had at Fred's house, coming off the back there, putting that line in. I mean, it's just...
Had the same thing you were on, huh?
We even have a sidewalk.
We made one, that's right.
This was your sewer.
And the sewer, as you can see, we're open trenching and putting brand new sewer down Santa Fe. They're old, old brick in most of that neighborhood. The brick, some of them are failing. Some of the options are, you know, when we looked at it was to, you know, quote them, you know, save some money there, but they're only going to last another 10 years. And this is 40 years old. So by the time you do all that, it's almost cheaper to put a brand-new precast one that's going to last 40 to 50 years after that. So, you know, instead of doing those, you know, minor repairs, just to take the short term, you know, 10 years, by the time you finish the whole city, you're going to have to come back and do this one again. So we're just trying to take the long-term approach.
And the sewer goes in the middle of the road?
Typically, you put, typically you put both water and sewer in the middle of the road and about 10 foot apart, right? And so as long as there's 10-foot separation, that's all we really care about. But as the mayor had brought up the point, we'll get through the geotechnical boards and figure out what's the best alignment.
And the existing railways. We put the water on the one side of the road, sometimes better. And then what we're doing in most of, you know, doing replacement, it's hard work to keep everybody in service while this is happening. So, you know, the water line is going to be done. We're going to do a parallel line, get it in service. And then one at a time, we'll just bring one person back on. So it'll just be a few hours and one person might be out of service in that for the sewer. We are doing, since there's a lot of stuff in the road, et cetera, instead of redoing all the roads, we are doing something called pipe bursting, making, get rid of the old clay pipe and putting in a nice PVC pipe and then redoing all the manholes within those areas. So it should be a very clean process to minimize the disruption within the city.
You know, guys, we did that over there on Mesa, by the gas lines there, we did that to avoid having to dig around the gas lines. And it's a pretty loud deal, but it works. It doesn't collapse.
Loud and sound?
Bang, bang, bang.
Yeah, and it vibrates a little bit. We do have the capability of doing vibration monitoring to make sure that we don't, you know, they don't go too fast to hurt any structures nearby.
Questions? Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Are you guys requiring action on this?
No, no. The action was when...
Well, we already did.
Yeah, when we went back in October, but just want to keep you informed.
Thank you, Mario.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mario.
Review of the fourth quarter report and annual resolution.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Manager. The first document you have is the fourth quarter report. We basically ended fiscal year 20 with an adjusted balance of $7.1 million in reserves. And I'll entertain questions or if not, we can approve the resolution.
Questions?
Oh, one thing I wanted to point out, the resolution this time, it has several... If you'll notice, the transfers match the transfer column in the middle of the report because the state wants those numbers to match. Normally, what I tell you guys is if we need $120,000 in a golf course, that's what I put on the resolution, that we had to transfer in $120,000. The state doesn't want to see that number. They want to see the total in and out, which is the net of that column. So we may be transferring in money and then out money. And so anyways, I don't know if you have any questions on that, but the numbers look a little different this time because of that.
The 7.9, that's what we end up at the end of the year?
That's, yeah, that's what our adjusted, well, yeah.
What was our adjustment for, what was the end of 19? Or that is, this is, oh, yeah, right?
This is fiscal year 20.
Yeah, okay, what was 19?
I don't know, I don't have that.
Was it, just guess, is it higher or lower?
It was 8 plus 8.6, probably, I would say.
Before you came on, Eric, the council had made a statement that we wanted to keep our reserves at 8 million.
Uh huh.
We didn't want to go below that. So that's, that's why that number is there. $195,000 has been transferred into the corrections fund.
Yeah, we had discussed that, actually, I think in the meeting right before COVID. Well, it was, it was in January, so it was second quarter and...
So did they have any of them?
Corrected COVID? Do what?
Have they let any of them out due to COVID?
I don't know.
No?
I haven't heard.
I haven't heard.
At least any here.
Yeah, it's just a pretty big number and it just...
Yeah, that's real big compared to what it's been.
And we went through, Laura and I looked at the bills and everything seems to be correct.
Some years, our corrections amounts were 260 some, so...
So the corrections went up, you're talking people who were getting arrested?
Yes, we pay a fee.
So it's like, how much money that you guys budgeted for this year or what's it?
We think it was $100,000, Kimberly, or was it?
It was 82,000. 82,000 is what we budgeted with transfers ends of $120,000. So approximately 200,000 is what we budgeted. And part of the reason our budget was off this year was because we had passed due bills from the county that we didn't get until later on. So we realized that. So for fiscal year 21, we have corrected the budget. So hopefully we won't have to have some new transfers.
They were behind billing us over six months. So we had some bills from the previous year coming through this year.
Yeah, it was crazy.
But that's all cleared up now?
Well, I wouldn't say that. Actually, I think it, I think it is pretty, I haven't, truthfully, looked at it probably in two months. Two months ago, I think we were pretty current, yes.
Thank you.
Are we expecting any increase on that? Because I know that courts basically are just closing down. They're not doing anything, right?
Yeah, and actually, our court revenues have drastically, not drastically, have been quite a bit reduced these last couple of months with COVID. So theoretically, it should, but I don't know. I haven't run those numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really hard to budget this year because everything's so up in the air as far as income at various locations and as far as revenue. But we just kind of proceed cautiously.
Pleasure, Council.
So I need you guys to approve the Resolution 20-1683, accepting the fourth quarter report for end of fiscal year 20, as well as the transfers that occurred and the increase in expenditures that also occurred.
So that balance that you quoted, 7.9, that's basically within the margin where we want to stay, right?
The 7.9?
Yeah, 7, 7,931.
You're looking at the budget, our next year's budget already?
Oh, that's next year's?
Yeah, that's fiscal year 21, that's the next year's budget.
Fred, I'm thinking that we don't want to go below 6 would be, would be my preference. Typically, 3 million in reserve is considered good, but I, I would recommend that we try to stay 6 or above as we work on projects. So we ended this year at 8, yes. So this next year, we don't want to go below 6.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at.
Right.
What are we doing that's, that's taking us from 5 to 6? Are we doing more projects or...
Spending money on employees.
No, it's projects.
Projects.
Yeah, it's projects.
Yeah, I'm looking at the 2021 budget. And as I see over here on the far right, the adjusted balance is 1.8 million. What is that?
Where are you at? Let's see.
Bottom page, right-hand total, adjusted balances for the 2021, 2022 budget. It puts us at 1.8 million.
So that's with money in reserve. But our preliminary budget that was done the end of May showed us ending with 6.690. So I think what's changed now is Kimberly had been working on our cash, our ending year cash and investment balances. And that, once she got all of her figures entered, it brought us down from 11, almost 12 million, to the 8 million. So I do recommend, and I think I've talked to a couple of you as you called today, to ask questions about the agenda that this budget that we're submitting is going to show that we're going to end at a 2.5 million. We need to work on it some more and see where we can cut. If you'll notice, in the expenditure line item, the biggest amount is in the middle. It's 15 million, almost 16 million. And that is capital projects this year. So we may need to work with Donald and really scrutinize. I know we have our First Street project starting here in September. And Donald, is it like 500,000 we have to commit or is it a million?
In total, almost a million, 900 and some thousand.
Okay, so that project definitely, we're not going to put on hold because we've been waiting for so long. But some of the things that we're working on, we may have to slow down if that's the area that we can save money. That's the biggest amount in the budget. The capital projects.
So with doing First Street, it still gets us to that 6 million, right? Or is that coming after the fact?
No, it would.
It would.
Yeah, that 15 million that's in that line item, that would be where I think we could save going into this next year. We may have to review that and make sure our numbers are accurate, but we may have to put some stuff on hold rather than finish out some of our projects this year. Our big projects.
I was telling you we need to look at what's been put in the first part. That the Recreation Department hasn't seen a case since March. The library hasn't seen anybody since March. We've got the seniors that are over there making meals. I know that don't take a good teeth. It sucks, but we're starting to hit those time. And if it gets down to where that number is right there, if it's shelved, 1.8 million, that's scary, guys. I want to entertain a motion for that. Go ahead, Eric.
That 1.8, that's...
It's actually...
We're still, we're still well above what the state requires. Even at the 1.8, guys, they only require like, I think it's 10% of our total budget, which would be $200,000, okay? It's still well above what the state requires, but I'm not comfortable, to be perfectly honest. I'm not comfortable going that way.
Do we have a district projects for the rest of the year that we're trying to commit to? Or do we have to do, I don't, the First Street's cool, but what else is there to...
Yeah, can you think off the top of your head, Donald, what we've gotten in the works? Washington Bridge?
The Pet Bridge on Second Street. We do have about, the Riverwalk Trail, because of the paperwork issues that we're having. It's a DOT project. And the Siemens Conservation Project. We probably have about $800,000 in expenses that we've made, but we haven't been able to get the reimbursement due to some paperwork issues. We're going back and forth now. We should probably receive that, I would say, August, September. But that's, that's in... that's an amount that we've already spent that we have not gotten reimbursed. So that's a significant amount. That's the only two items that I could think that will, will make an impact as far as reimbursement. So that's almost a million.
That's why I should keep that in there.
Well, and then also, Donald, we got almost, we got almost a million dollars for 78 and 77 too, that we got after July 1st, which, so it doesn't show up on these numbers.
The trash.
And the trash.
That was about 500,000 that we had spent, came in.
So we're still getting some of those items in? Yes. Yeah, but they were after June 30th, so they're not reflected. So they're not showing here.
Moody, you said 195,000 was transferred into the corrections fund. Was that before or after it was increased over here by 90,000?
Where are you looking at, Fred?
That's after they're increased, Fred.
Because it says increased by 90,000.
Yeah, we increased by 90,000, but whereas the 195,000 was transferred to the corrections fund, you're asking if those are combined together?
No, they're not. So what that means is, is where we were 90,000 over budget.
Over budget.
And then, so we had to transfer in 125,000 to cover, to cover those expenditures. But the 125,000 is for the whole year, the 90,000 is just for one quarter. Right. Yeah, so those four items on the bottom are, are not items that we were over budget, that I have to, we have to get approval from the state that we were over budget on those items.
Anything else? Counselors? What do you want to do with this resolution?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 20-160, 1683.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Counselor Padiya?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Next.
So the next agenda item is the budget for fiscal year 21. And we just need to approve the final budget with Resolution 20-1684.
What's the pleasure of counsel?
And just to, just to throw one more thing in here, the, the cash that I had projected for the interim budget, I, you know, I don't know what we're going to spend for the next three months, but we spend about $2 million a month. And that's about 1.6 in accounts payable and about 400,000 in payroll every month. And so in March 30th, when I created these numbers, when I, when I gave Laura these numbers to finalize, you know, I was projecting our, our cash to be higher, but we spent $6 million the last three months, give or take. And so when our revenues go down.
We spent three, $6 million in the last, what, three months?
The last three months. We spent $2 million a month, about, yes. Spent about 1.6.
Okay, okay, I thought you meant just one.
Yeah, April, May, and June. April, May, and June.
Okay.
So, so, you know, we have a, a smaller revenue number in April, May, and June seem to be above normal, actually. So that's another thing to take in consideration here is that the revenues are considerably less too. And so the revenues come up. But anyways, just more things to think about.
Counsel's pleasure, Resolution 20, 1684.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 20, 1684.
Second?
I'll second.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Counselor Padiya?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Yes.
Number 11.
And the last resolution, 20-1682, is to, we have $500,000 in CDs that matured in July. And so we'd like to move that money into our operating account so that we can have that money to pay bills if we need it to.
Questions? Pleasure of the council. Resolution 20-1682.
Yeah, I'm not wishing to accept that, Resolution 20, 1682.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Counselor Padiya?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Last.
Thank you.
Thank you, good morning, Jim.
You ready for 12?
Yes.
Number 12 is a vacant building ordinance, and it is something that Committee for the City of France and some of our partners have been working on. It's part of our Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan that was developed several years ago. And the recommendation from the consultants that did our development plan, which is addressing our downtown area, trying to get our empty buildings filled, trying to improve the look of things, trying to improve downtown traffic, pedestrian traffic and, and shopping. We, it was recommended to us that we create a vacant building ordinance similar to other communities. And basically, it puts pressure on people who own those vacant buildings down on Santa Fe Avenue and First Street. Eventually, we might want to expand to the rest of town to vacant homes, but right now, we'd like to address the vacant buildings. This ordinance would require individuals that have a vacant building, that own one, to register it and then to, every year, pay a fee. And the fee is supposed to hopefully help deter, there's a deterrent maybe to, or an incentive for people to try to get their building filled rather than leave it sit vacant. They would have to keep the building boarded up and looking, looking nicely as far as weeds and trash and broken windows, that kind of thing, so that they have some responsibility to take care of their property.
How does this play into the county's ordinance where they, if property dilapidates, they let the taxes go down on it instead of raising it?
I don't know.
You might want to look at that, guys, because that's going to create a conflict.
How's that, Moody?
The county's got an ordinance, but if the property is dilapidated and falling down, they lower the taxes on it, guys. Okay? This contradicts that. It puts fees on it for having it. So we need to look at this with the county attorneys and our attorneys and see, because we might need to force the county to up their game. Okay? Because the last thing we want to do is get caught in a lawsuit. Well, the county says this, the city says this, what do we do? Okay? Because the county's actually the one that has the property taxes. So that would, that would be my only suggestion on this, is maybe table this and, and look into what the deal is with the county so that we can avoid this going down with more money with lawyer routes that way. This way, we can just go ahead and address it right away. Because I, I honestly believe that county ordinance needs to be changed, guys. Because if they end up, the property vacates and they let it go down, their property taxes go down. It should be just the opposite. When the property taxes go up or they stay the same, because then it gives them an incentive to put somebody back in that building instead of, the incentive to leave it empty because their property taxes go down. And right now, that's the way it is in Solana County.
I would agree with the mayor on that.
So let's go ahead. That would be my recommendation. Let's table this. Let's get into the attorneys and get with the county and see what their ordinance is and see where we're going to have our conflict at, and let's have that fight so that we can, I mean, because it's crazy what we've got going on. And it's only going to get worse if we don't do something. Okay, so that would be my recommendation. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we table this item.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Redarte?
Yes.
Counselor Padiya?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
And just get that to the attorneys and, and get with the county, because I know their ordinance is something about, if they lower taxes when the building goes down, when it gets empty. And for me, that's no incentive of any kind. It's an incentive to leave it empty and let it go down further because of property taxes.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay. Comments from the council? Laura, you got anything?
I don't.
Mr. Redarte?
Yes, I have a comment. Well, I just want to say to the citizens that addressed the council this evening, you know, there's a great deal of frustration going on in our country, not only in our city. And we see the best minds in the, in the country trying to solve the issues and the problems that this country is facing. We hear, we hear your voice. I, like many others that own small businesses, have been impacted as well. I'm facing the real possibility of also losing a business. At this point, I don't know where it's going to go, but, you know, we can openly defy the governor and create more problems for ourselves. I'm not saying that we agree with the governor and what she's saying. I think that she is doing a lot of overreaching in, in our state. I think that Mr. Pines is reaching out, looking for solutions. I think businesses, you know, we, we live in a country where the spirit of this country has always been the, the people themselves that reach up and make solutions. And I agree with you that I think that we could collaborate on a better basis to come up with solutions that could help our local businesses, because I, I feel for them. I see them struggling and they can't pay their bills. The government has tried to help us a little bit, but that's just a, a small Band-Aid. And I think if we continue to work on this, we as a community can come up with solutions that will help our businesses. And at the same time, because I know if we, if we bring the government down on our backs, it's, it's not going to be, it's going to get worse, it won't get any better. And shouting at each other and accusing each other and pointing fingers at each other is never a good solution. Solution is joining hands and coming up together and seeing how we can work better. I, I feel the frustration of, not only that, I see, I see that in, in parents that having to sit there. I see that with my daughter, she got four kids. How do you deal with four kids sitting at home 24/7, you know? Kids are.
Take them to the grandparents.
I've had my share of babysitting grandkids. But, you know, it's, it's not an easy solution. And, and I think that pointing fingers at, at each other, you know, we, we as a city council, we're, we're trying to, we're listening to you. We, we don't have the solutions to everything. We don't profess to have the solutions. And if you think that we're going to come up with solutions overnight, then yourself deceived, I'll tell you that. But we, we are listening and we, we do, you know, just like this young lady that gave us a presentation tonight, we look at possible options like this to bring more industry into our community where it's going to provide more job employment. Not only that, it'll, it'll, it'll have a trickle effect to help the businesses in, in this community. I think we should look at more of those options. Anyway, that's, that's my comments.
Fred?
Padiya? Yes, thank you, mayor. I, first of all, I've had quite a few phone calls from citizens and I want to thank Chief Chavez, Laura, Winhurst. I got tired of these people calling me from the same area. So I took all three of them over there and we got, I think we got it solved, I don't know. And I echo what Fred is saying to our citizens who want to thank you. We, I feel for you guys because I, there's no place to eat here now. But, but I, I was up north, I was up north, guys. I went up to Taos, some bases out there. And those people are having a hard time, but you know what? They got the restaurant, they got these food wagons. They got the food wagon right there, they got two, three tables, one table is number one. People lined up. I don't know if you guys been to Taos, but the Taosian Cafe, it's like cafecito here, a big parking lot. The guy bought some conduit, placed it up there and put two, three tables. You should have seen our people. They're trying, trying to make a buck. It's that inside dining, it's outside, but it's legal. And like I said, if we bring the gun down on us, that's going to create more problems, guys. Let's work together. You got my phone number, call me, we'll get together and talk and do something. Thank you.
Eric? Yeah, after listening to some of the people that spoke today, I think you're right. I think we all need to work together in this community to bring it back. There's been some separation, some frustration with, with everybody that lives here and that works here. So, you know, not only are we going to try to bring in solutions or help people along, but if you've got some ideas, bring them to us. You know, Laura, those other councilmen, the mayor, we'll listen. So we're here to help as well. That's all I have to say.
Eric? I don't want to say anymore. I mean, this is, this is, I, I, I honestly, I think I hit my limit. I hit my limit. And, I mean, I, we're losing money. I mean, our community needs it. You know, we had the rodeo go on a few, few weeks ago. It's great, ton of people. I never heard once anybody say, "I got COVID because I went to the..."
We didn't get a spike, okay?
But, but we're losing money. I mean, that's, that's an industry here that we should be capitalizing on. Yes, I understand. But there's a way. I mean, we can still be functionable. I mean, if you want to wear the mask, then wear the mask. If you don't, then don't. I, I, I'm so over it. I'm sorry.
I got a couple of emails. I've been screaming that I need to change and all this good stuff. So I just wanted to read a couple of emails that I've gotten from some of the kids that I coached. This first one, and I won't get into the details of the ambush issue, but I'm going to read the first part of it. Coach? How's that?
Hi, thank you.
Okay, this email says, "Coach/Mayor, I want to thank you for always putting the needs of the community first. Times are tough right now, and especially in grants. Despite the pressure from outside agencies and persons, you have held firm and not allowed them to change you. What people outside of this community don't understand is that you have always worked to create the best possible results with the resources that you've had. You have always done things your way, even though many have frowned upon your bluntness. You are not the average politician, and that is why you have my respect. I will never forget what you told me just before I shipped off to the Army. You told me not to be a hero. I never really understood those words until my first complex ambush on November 10, 2004. I won't go into the details of the ambush." The end of the email states, "I may live in Texas now, but Grants will always be my home. Thank you for standing up for the community and doing what is right." So I just want to let everybody know I will not change. I will be the man of integrity and honor that I am, even though you may not like my bluntness and you may not like my delivery. On the second letter, which really blew me away today, Laura handed it to me in my mailbox, and it's from Japan. It came airmail from Japan. I have no idea who this person is, okay? "Dear Mayor Hicks, you were praised recently by Dr. Taylor Marshall on his podcast, which inspired me to write and commend you for your brave and faithful act of consecrating your city to Mary's immaculate heart. Instincts told me right away that only a man with guts and faith could exemplify such heroism in this debacle, in this diabolical times. One look at your biography confirmed it. United States Marine, fourth degree Knight of Columbus. I only wish that many more would follow your good example. Thanks for your courageous piety, and may the good Lord bless you abundantly in all your good works and intentions. Michael Izzo, 2816 Toshimura, Yakamachi, Ni, Japan."
How many times did you have to?
Dude, I had to go on and get on to Google and get how to pronounce those, those words, okay? Because I had no idea. So guys, I just wanted to, to let everybody out there know, we are supported in what we are doing here in this fight against the governor and what she's doing to the communities across this state. There are cities that are open, Unis is one, I've spoken to that mayor many, many times, but he still hasn't received a ticket. I'm the only one, I'm the only individual in the entire state of New Mexico to get that. And that's coming right out of my attorney's mouth, okay? And my attorneys are the same ones that are using, that are following the legacy church, the, the legacy lawyers, as they're called. Well, they're handling my case with the state too. So I know it's going to get dismissed, I'm probably not going to have to go to the hearing, but it's just a matter of the governor putting this kind of pressure on all of us. I have a, a link here that Sammy Garcia sent me. It's a bunch of doctors standing in front of the Supreme Court talking about COVID. And I'd really like all And I'd really like all of you to look at it. Because from what these doctors are telling us, the government's lying to us. They're lying to us upside down and backwards. And all this is, is a ploy to bring Marxism into this country. Period. Black Lives Matter, if you look at Black Lives Matter, go to their website and look at it, guys. They want to destroy the nuclear family. In other words, they don't want mommies and daddies no more. They want you to have kids with whoever and the state raise them. They are total Marxist organization. It has nothing to do with Mr. Floyd's death. It has to do with the destroying of this country. Therefore, I would recommend everyone stand up for your constitutional rights, period. Don't let anybody tell you they're suspended, because they cannot be suspended. They were given to you by the divine hand of God, not by any government. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to close this meeting down.
I will move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Have a good night, guys, thank you for coming.